Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and at midnight, and also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. At this time, we'll have the Mayor's Award. The Mayor's Award, which is the final Mayor's Award, with me serving as the Mayor, will be presented to Ms. Joanna Schultz. This Mayor's Award is presented to Ms. Joanna Schultz for her community service, for her dedicated service to the military community, Leavenworth community, and students of Leavenworth and Fort Leavenworth throughout the years. After an exciting, well-decorated military career, Jo and her family decided to call Leavenworth home in 1997. And the community gained a wonderful community advocate. For eighteen years, she helped shape the lives of students and was named the Leavenworth Secondary Teacher of the Year in 2012 and the Council of, the Council for Exceptional Children Teacher of the Year Award in 2013 for her deep commitment to educating today's youth. Joanna has a passion for community service. She continues to tutor students at the Richmond County Culture Center and serves as many service organizations, boards, serves on many organization boards in our community. The Deepwater Window Association, Legal Whipping Motors, Leavenworth Equal Justice Initiative, just the name of few. She is the current president of the Leavenworth NAACP Chapter and played an integral role in re-establishing the Andrew Martin Luther King Celebration and the Juneteenth Parade and Festival in Leavenworth, Kansas. The first city of Kansas, recognizing thanks Joanna for her continued support of all community organizations that help bring equity and inclusion to the underserved families in our community. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for being a leader. Thank you for investing in our community. And thank you for being a mentor to myself as well. God bless you.
First, of course, I want to thank God for, without Him, I wouldn't be here. I want to thank the Mayor and the Commissioners. I really appreciate this. And I want to thank the community and all the organizations that I work with and the people that I work with, because Leavenworth has a special place in my heart. It is my adopted home now, and I really look forward to our future and what we're going to do together as a community, because we stand poised for greatness. So, thank you all, and especially want to thank my husband, who puts up with me.
Old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from November 28th, 2023, regular meeting. And December 5th, 2023, special meeting. If there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the, the minutes from the City Commission Regular Meeting of November 28th and the City, the City Commission's Special Meeting of Tuesday, December 5th.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Pittman.
Can I vote on that? I wasn't here.
Yes.
Yeah, you still good.
Aye.
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 A motion passed, five zero.
Could you speak a little louder?
Uh, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, I will. Yes, ma'am. Next item on the agenda, Second Consideration Ordinance Number 8228, Kansas Gas Franchise Agreement.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the first reading. As a quick reminder, this is just the city's franchise agreement renewal with Kansas Gas for our standard franchise. If you have any questions, City Attorney or I would attempt to answer those.
There any questions or comments?
No.
If not, this requires a roll call. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 All right, pass five zero. Next item on the agenda, Second Consideration Ordinance Number 8229, Special Use Permit to Operate a Fire Station in RMF Zoning District.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, again, there have been no changes since the first reading. As a quick reminder, this is a special use permit to allow fire stations three, when we rebuild it here in 2024, to operate within the zoning RMF.
There's no questions or comments. This requires a roll call vote. Begin voting with Commissioner, I mean, roll call vote, Commissioner Pittman.
Aye.
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 All right, five zero. Uh, next item on the agenda, Second Consideration Ordinance Number 8230, Special Use Permit to Allow Assisted Living Facility in R1-9 Zoning District.
Again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the first reading, and there also have been no other public feedback that we have received.
Any questions or comments? If not, this also requires a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Vote passed, five zero. Next item on the agenda, new business. Anyone wish to address the Commission regarding any items that is not on tonight's agenda? We ask that you come up to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. And Ms. Sarah, do we have any individuals signed up?
First up is Mr. Harold Peterson.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, my name is Harold Peterson. As you know, that one of our extinguish members in that, in the community chaplain, Sam Stanford, passed away in that, this Monday. On which, in that, I'm asking all the Commissioners to attend in that, the, basically, in that, the open casket and also wake at the Davis Funeral Home, which is on the 20th, from 3:00 to 7:00. Chaplain Sam, in that, had been involved in over twenty some Christian ministry programs in that throughout both Leavenworth and also Kansas and also Missouri. He also was involved in that more so in the international stage two, dealing with North Korea, Ukraine, and other countries with missionaries. The one thing in that he was very strongly in that supportive was a group that meets the last Friday, unless it was a holiday, then we usually met a week before in that, the last Friday, which is Point Man Ministries. Point Man Ministries deals with PTSD, which is what the VA calls it. I call it PTSD, which is post-traumatic stress injury, because there is no real cure for it. It is now in that, as of last year, it is no longer in that just for veterans. It is open to all first responders. That means firefighters, policemen, paramedics. Basically, in that, anybody in that that basically deals with areas where basically they will basically respond to in that, basically, injury in that PTSD. I want to, in that, encourage you to make sure that the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the EMTs and the fire stations know that there is something in that where they, and it is also open to their families. It is not just in that for those first responders. It is also for the families too. They can come and basically in that, you know, it is one of the most helpful in that organizations, and it is an international organization. It is not a United States. It is, it has multiple countries in that that is part of this.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
If you have any questions, please ask me.
He was, he was a great man. Thank you.
Yes, he was. Yes, and I definitely plan to attend as well. Thank you for making the Commission aware of it.
Yeah, I know that you won't be able to make the actual funeral, which is the next day at 10 o'clock, because you, all of you have a lot of work to do. But at least in that, attend that, please.
Yes, sir.
And I ask everyone in the community that knew him to attend.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chaplain Sam was a, was a great man and loved his community and always found a way to give back and give people hope. Yes, ma'am.
Next up is Walter Williams.
Good evening. I'm Walter Williams, and I want to ask my counterpart to join with me tonight, because we have a special award for Mayor Wilson. On behalf of the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated and the local chapter of Omicron Iota Iota, better known as the Buffalo Soldier Qs, we want to recognize you because you were selected from our chapter to be Citizen of the Year. Each year, at our Founder's Week, that's one of our ten-man day-to-day programs, and that is to make sure we recognize those citizens within our community that are not within the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi and for their outstanding achievements. Most notably is the way Mayor Wilson conducted himself as not let his past define him, but rose above his past to be a bridge builder, to help the community at large, and make everyone within the greater Leavenworth County a true citizen, true brother and sisterhood of love. So, Mayor Wilson?
Appreciate you, man. Don't make me cry, man.
That looks fancy.
Yeah, we feel like I'm seven feet tall right now. That's special, man. Appreciate it. Thank you so much, and, man, I receive this with honors. Thank you so much.
We've got one more. Gail Kefter.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, being here. I'm nervous. Uh, I know it's probably been addressed numerous times, personal property tax, but I don't get social media. I don't do any of that stuff. But being a senior citizen, living on an income of less than $28,000 a year, I bought my house about eleven years ago. I paid $35,000 for it as a HUD home. You know, you go in and you make repairs. And my personal property tax was $600. And over ten years, it has increased substantially. In the past three years, in 2020, my tax went from 600, you know, but it went to 70,000. '21 was 100,000. '22, it was 130,000. And 2023, it's 150,000 value of my house. That started out as a 35. And my personal property taxes are well over $2,100 a year. With, you know, everybody says the cost of living, you know, everything's going up. Yeah, but my income is not. It is frozen with Social Security and my pension. And it's, to come up with $2,100, even paying half payments, is a struggle. Because I, you know, utilities, car, health, everything is going up, but my budget. It is, so I'm living well below the poverty line. And, you know, for a house that cost me 35,000, granted, I've done a lot of work to improve it and have spent money to improve it, that to be going from six hundred, I didn't even mind a thousand, but it's creeping up to over $2,100 a year. And like I said, my income is frozen. And at 70, I don't think I should have to go get a part-time job just to pay my personal property taxes. And, you know, my sidewalks are crap. The alleyways are junk, you know, the trees need to be trimmed, because it's on an easement, so it's my responsibility. I can't afford to pay to have the big oak trees trimmed. And I, you know, I know they won't go down, but, I mean, should there be something for senior citizens? There's something for Section 8. There's something for everybody, veterans. But there's nothing for us senior citizens who are on a frozen income to help pay for, and it's just going to go up to where, I don't know, you know, it's food, medicine, or personal property tax.
Yes, ma'am.
And anyway, I thank you for your kind consideration and your patience, and I wish you all a very, very Merry Christmas.
Ma'am, if you would reach, if you would reach out to me, there's two programs that the state has to freeze your taxes, your property taxes. If you could reach out to me, I can see if you can get on those programs. I would love to help you.
Yes.
They're programs for seniors. Holly Pittman, I'm new.
Where do I go?
Um, are you going to be round after the meeting? Maybe I can?
Yes, yes. But I was just, you know, it's a plight of a lot of senior citizens.
We can see if you qualify. I'd love to help you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, before we nominate the next mayor for the upcoming year, I just want to share a few words. First, giving honor to my Lord and Savior Jesus. It's been an honor and a privilege to be able to serve as the Mayor of Leavenworth, Kansas. This year has been filled with joy, pain, and fulfillment. It was at the Merry Christmas tree lighting that I found out that my sister had passed. And I was broken. I was hurt. I felt like quitting, giving up. But the community, they wrapped their arms around me, and they supported me. And they encouraged me to keep going, to not give up. The community that supported me is why I'm still here, and I'm not giving up, and I'm going to continue to move forward. It has been an honor to serve this community, because this community served me when I was at my lowest. So I want to say thank you all for believing in me, for encouraging me, and helping me to see that I am more than enough. You all didn't judge me based upon my past mistakes. You all seen the person that I am today, a person that loves God, a person that loves this community, a person that serves to meet the needs of each individual, and that really stands for unity. So I say from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for giving me this opportunity to serve as the Mayor of Leavenworth, Kansas. And I just want to close. I just wrote a few words, just in case if I got to crying, I couldn't, you know, entertain myself. The essence of service lies in making a difference in the lives of others. It's about extending a helping hand, offering guidance, and fostering an environment where everyone can thrive. I encourage each member of this community to find ways, big or small, but get involved and serve someone other than yourself. This is the city, the first city of a second chance. We are much more than a prison town. We are a united, loving, caring, compassionate community. And I am blessed with the opportunity to be able to serve and represent everybody in the year 2023. So thank you all. I love you all. And I give all praise and accolades to my beautiful wife, my children, my mother. Feel like I'm on the BT Awards, I'm about to go down a list. But to everybody, the Commission, Paul, Sarah, I know you got tired of me reaching out for those Mayor's Awards, but this right here is, is amazing. It's beautiful to be part of American history, Leavenworth history, and together we did it. So give yourselves a round of applause, because together we will continue to make a difference. God bless y'all. Thank y'all. And now with the nomination for December 12th, 2023, to December 10th, 2024, I would like to nominate, can I get a drum roll, please? Why everybody looking so tense? I do believe we should have a mayor-elect former government, but we have a system in place, and I honor the tradition of this city. So with that being stated, I would like to nominate Commissioner Griff Martin to serve as the Mayor of Leavenworth, Kansas.
Second.
You have my support, and it has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Pittman.
Aye.
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 Come on, y'all, let's give them another round of applause, y'all.
Well, I would like to definitely take a minute before we move on to thank my Commission team up here. But honestly, I'd like to go back to Mayor Wilson and just say that filling your shoes, man, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough task. You've, you've always got a way of making everybody smile when, when you get in the room. And I'm fortunate if I don't make people try to run for the door. But I really appreciate your leadership, and I know I'm not, I'm not just speaking for myself, but for the citizens here at Leavenworth, everything you've done, always making it known who Jesus Christ is to you.
Amen.
And I, I just love to see the support you have from your family and what you continue to do. And, and you're the one that makes serving on a Commission not seem like it's just another government meeting. So definitely cannot compare with that, but I do thank you for how you've served this whole time and how you are going to continue to do so. And I would continue to encourage you, because it just seems like we never know what life we're going to impact with, even those we'll just say hi to. So I do thank you again, and I'd like to ask everybody for another round of applause for... And with that, I'd like to move to nomination for Mayor Protem for December 12th, 2023, serving a term to December 10th, 2024, Commissioner Holly Pittman.
Second. Third, fourth, fifth, I got it.
All right, I'm again voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye twice.
Aye twice.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I vote for myself? Aye.
All right, moving on from there. Financial Claims Reviewer serving a term from December 12th, 2023, to December 10th, 2024.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Hengula.
And I'll second that.
Tag, you're it. Have you, have you done it before?
No.
Oh, you haven't.
That's great. Your turn.
I can learn.
And with that, we'll begin voting with Mayor Protem Pittman.
Aye.
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 All right. All right, welcome aboard, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, do we want to take two minutes to see if anybody wants to head out that's, that's here for that, so they don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. You all are free to stay or move on.
We just have a regular business meeting, so if you don't need anything else, you're free to go, and we'll give you a couple minutes.
Yeah, you can leave anytime, yeah.
With, with that, we'll move on to the 2024 Cereal Malt Beverage Licenses. Our City Clerk, Sarah Bodenstetter, will handle this item.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, before you tonight is the 2024 Cereal Malt Beverage License Approval. It is required that the City Commission approve these each year by state statute. So the following nineteen establishments have made application for the renewal of their cereal malt beverage licenses for 2024. The Police Department has performed the records check and checks and approved the applications for renewal for the following establishments. For off-premise licenses, those where you purchase in-store and leave to consume, you have 7-Eleven at 609 Metropolitan, Casey's at 2004 Spruce Street, 950 Eisenhower Road, and 2100 South Fourth Street, Family Dollar at 104 North Broadway Street and 1906 Spruce Street, Dylan's, 720 Eisenhower Road, Hometown, 111 North Broadway, Minute Mart, 3122 South Fourth, Murphy Oil at 1050 Eisenhower Road, Price Chopper, 2107 South Fourth, Sam's Food Mart at 1031 Metropolitan, Star Gas, 788 Spruce Street, Walgreens, 2900 South Fourth, Walmart, 5010th Avenue. Um, the on-premise licenses are those that you can purchase in-store and consume in-store. For AIDS Place at 5101 10th Street or 10th Avenue, Ava's Island Cafe, 732 Shawnee, Little Bar, 1431 10th Avenue, and Town Pub Restaurant at 1001 Ottawa Street. So staff is recommending approving of the issuance of the 2024 cereal malt beverage licenses as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions, anybody?
There's a whole load of other places that have licenses like this. They just don't get them at this particular time.
Correct. So there's a difference between cereal malt beverage and a true liquor license, and these are strictly for cereal malt beverage.
Cereal malt beverage is 3.2. It was raised a few years ago, but otherwise these places don't have wine or spirits.
Yeah. Good.
There's no other questions, all entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the 2024 Cereal Malt Beverage Licenses as presented.
Second.
Begin voting with Mayor Protem.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed five to zero. Moving on to the cancellation of the December 26th, 2023 City Commission Meeting.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the item before you is the requesting the cancellation of the December 26th, 2023 City Commission Regular Meeting. Section 2-52 of the City Code Ordinances says that the City Commission may cancel or modify any ordinarily established meetings by motion and approval. We traditionally cancel the second meeting in December, as it usually falls right around the Christmas holiday. So the item before you tonight is to consider cancellation of the December 26th meeting.
Does anybody object, or?
I'm good with that. Questions on that? Okay.
Move to approve the cancellation of the December 26th, 2023 Regular Meeting.
Second.
All right, we'll be, begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed five to zero. Item nine, update on unsafe and dangerous fire damage structure at 805 North 18th Street.
This will be handled by Halbert, at the Chief Building Inspector for the City.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Most of you are aware of this process, but with the new Commissioner, I want to go over it real quickly. When, when there's a damaged structure, whether it's caused by fire or other events, and there's an insurance claim or payout of 75% of the insured value, then the city receives 15% of that out payment. And we use it to make sure that we have funds if we have to demolish the structure, or we give it back to the property owners once the... or we give it back to the property owners once the repairs have been made. In this case, we're at 805 North 18th. They have completed the repairs to the exterior of the building, but we are still not at the point where we traditionally release the funds because they are not ready to sheet rock the inside of the building yet. There's still electrical work that needs to be done. They told me another 30 days. I, I kind of recommend maybe we give them 60 just to make sure because I said 60 last time and we're, we're here again. But they are making progress, don't, don't get me wrong.
Can we keep extending it over time? Or is there like a limit how long we can keep extending it?
The governing body can extend it as long as you see fit.
Yeah, yeah. Especially when there's progress.
In this case, we got their money, so.
Yeah.
Whenever they get it up to speed, then we can go ahead and give their money back.
And, and if they're done quicker than the 60 days, we'll bring it back to you so that we can release the funds once we get to that point.
Timeframe, 60 days?
60 days, yeah, I'm in favor of 60.
Pretty good, okay. That I just need a motion.
I move we approve 60 days extension on 805 North 18th Street.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Begin voting with Scott Fisher Pittner.
Aye.
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 Motion passed five to zero. Moving on to item 10, Public Hearing for Amending the 2023 Budget. Just need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second. All right, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 May you open.
I'm going to turn this item over to Roberta Byer, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, the 2023 budget was put together in the middle of 2022. And if at the end of 2023, we've determined that we may go over budget in any one fund, we must do a budget amendment in order to avoid budget law violations. We have five funds where I think we're close, we may go over budget. One of the, I don't believe any of these five will go over budget, but we're close enough that I wanted to do a budget amendment to make sure we wouldn't have a violation if the costs exceed. All of the funds that we're proposing a budget amendment for have revenue sources to cover the budget amendment that is not the property tax. So I'm just going to read the policy report. I wanted to explain that upfront. But this policy proposes a republication of the 2023 budget, which will increase the expenditure authority to accommodate unanticipated expenditures for the Recreation Fund, Library Fund, Library Employee Benefit Fund, the Hotel Tiff Fund, and the Stormwater Capital Project Fund. According to KSA 792929A, municipalities are authorized to amend the budget to spend money not in the original budget as long as the additional expenditures do not require additional tax levies. The Commission approved and adopted the 2023 budget in August 2022, and that established the maximum expenditures for these funds. And according to Kansas statutes, fund cannot exceed the expenditure authority without amending the budget. Budget amendments must be made from existing revenues and cannot require additional tax levies. Before proposing an amendment to the budget, there must be a notice of public hearing published in the local newspaper 10 days prior to the hearing. A notice of public hearing for amending the 2023 budget was published in the Leavenworth Times on Friday, December 1, 2023. Due to the circumstances that were not anticipated when the 2023 budget was originally published, the above-mentioned funds may exceed their expenditure authority. Additional revenues are available to support the increased expenditures. Staff recommends the 2023 budget for the above-mentioned funds be amended as proposed. Again, the proposed amendments require no additional tax levies. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any of these five funds.
For clarification too, a lot of the expenditure increases are due to revenue increases. So they have to be entered as revenue and then budgeted as an expenditure when they come in as revenue. So the library is a good example where we have to estimate how much is going to come in. But if delinquent taxes come in higher and they collect $2,000 more, that's revenue coming in, but then you have to also to, to spend that or mark it as an expenditure.
Got it.
So the city isn't creating new programs. We are not levying any more taxes. These are just revenues that came in over that now have to be also be marked as expenditures.
Sure, okay.
Tiff is another good example of that where the Tiff revenues come in higher and then they have to be paid out higher as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a wash, basically.
Right.
At least a couple of them.
Yeah, anything that comes in as a revenue also has to have a corresponding expense.
Extend to it.
Okay, okay.
Or does.
Thank you, Roberta, for covering all that there. Anybody have any questions on that at all?
Mayor, I would remind you that you do have to open it up to the public.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that's right, thank you. Waters, appreciate that. Okay, then we will. At this time, we'll open up to any staff or public comments at this time, if anybody has any. With that, if not, no other questions from anybody? We'll move to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Name is closed. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to, I guess I need a motion to consider the amendments to the 2023 budget as presented.
I move to approve the amendments to 2023 budget as presented.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Pittman.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed five to zero. Moving on to Resolutions, item 11, Resolution B 2353, Planners 2, Tenant Write-Off Accounts.
The next three items are end-of-the-year cleanups in the Planners 2, and they will be handled by Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As Paul indicated, these are kind of end-of-the-year housekeeping items. So the first one is the tenant write-off accounts for Planners 2. These are basically accounts that are uncollectible for various reasons. A tenant might have passed away or moved into a nursing home or just otherwise unable to help collect what is due. Maybe damage assessments, past due rent, those types of things. HUD does require us to remove these accounts from our register when they're determined to be uncollectible. And so this is just a resolution to remove those accounts from the register. As you can see, we've got a little under $4,000 in tenant write-off accounts, which is a little bit less than we have had in past years. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
How do you notify them that they are delinquent? Do you try to find them?
Yes, so Andrea Sheedam, who's our manager over there, she, every effort is made to contact these folks. Like I said, a lot of times they've passed away, family members are unreachable, or they've moved into a nursing home and are just unable to pay or they're maybe weren't able to get them a forwarding address that was left. But so we've got, I think, five this time. So out of all the accounts that are, are past due, yeah, she makes every attempt to reach folks.
Awesome, thank you.
I don't have any further questions either, anybody else?
No.
Okay, that just need a motion.
I move to, move that we adopt the attached resolution deleting uncollectible tenant accounts.
Second. Motion's been seconded. I'll begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Motion passed five to zero. Item 12, Resolution B 2354, Planners 2, Disposed Assets.
Okay, this is another process that's required by HUD. We're required to remove any physical assets from our inventory if we no longer have them. And the only one we have this year is a full-size truck that was replaced by a vehicle in the city's lease program this year. And so again, this is just a resolution removing that from our inventory.
It's already been sold, right? And we're just removing the inventory?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, pretty straightforward on that. No other questions, just need a motion on that one.
Move to adopt the, this resolution removing disposed property from the Leavenworth Housing Authorities inventory.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Pittman.
Aye.
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 Motion passed five to zero. Item 13, Resolution B 2355, Planners 2, Schedule of Charges.
Okay, this is our annual update of the schedule of charges. Routinely, staff at Planners 2 has to perform a number of maintenance or repair or upkeep activities with units over there. And we publish this list of charges to the tenants. They're made aware of these. The housing authority only charges what the actual costs are. The housing authority is not making money on these. And so the fee changes are just due to inflation and increase in our costs. So again, just the actual costs are being passed along to the tenants for any maintenance or repair work that are, that is needed to their unit. And this would just be a resolution adopting the update of charges.
I move that we approve the resolution amending the admissions and continued occupancy policy for the public housing program, Planners 2.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded. I'll begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Motion passed five to zero. Thank you. Item 14, Resolutions for Excel Development Group Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Project.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'm excited about this item tonight. And first, I'm going to invite up Connor Menard, the Development Director for Excel Development, to come up while I introduce the item. The city has been working with Excel Development on a senior, which is 55 and older residential project for consideration under the Kansas Housing Resources Corp.'s Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. The proposed development would be submitted through KHRC for competitive award in early 2023. And what I'm going to do is walk through the action items, and then I'm going to turn it over to Connor to go through the project itself. So when you apply for low-income housing tax credits through the Kansas Housing Resources Corp., there's an application. And within the application, there are items that you have to check off, things that you have to do, some dealing with the property itself. But what we're dealing with tonight is the role that the local government plays in supporting an application to get its best foot forward with the KHRC. So the first thing that's before you is a resolution of support. We've done these before for these types of projects. It says, it outlines the project, and it says that the, there is a need for this type of housing in the community and that the Commission is in full support, the governing body of the project. The second thing we will consider tonight and is new this year or something that we haven't done before is what's called a non-binding resolution in intent to issue industrial revenue bonds. And that's a, that's a long way of saying they would be able to essentially use the city's exemption on sales tax for building materials and anything that was subject to state sales tax. So you are giving them your, your sales tax exemption. And that, that again helps them, and it doesn't really impact the city in any meaningful way. And then the final thing that I just need a consensus on that KHRC requires is a fee waiver letter. So the city has a number of development permit fees, whether that's inspection fees or public improvement fees. And KHRC asks that the governing body waive an amount not to exceed $40,000 of city fees. So the city staff has reviewed that, and we believe that, that that is fine on our end, but that ultimately it's up to the Commission. So after Connor goes through the project, we'll consider those three items individually and put those up for Commission consideration. So I'm going to turn it over to Connor Menard from Excel Development.
Well, thanks for that introduction, Paul, and thanks for everyone's time here, Mayor, you Mayor and the Commissioner. Yeah, we're excited. Again, I'm Connor Menard with Excel Development Group. We're a housing developer, property manager, do some construction as well. Our main office is in Lincoln, Nebraska. That's where I'm based out of, but we develop throughout the Midwest. And so, yeah, with this project, like Paul was saying, it's an affordable housing tax credit project through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, KHRC, and it's a, it's a very competitive process. And we actually tried to get tax credits last year. If you, some of you may remember, we didn't get funded. But with this project, I'm excited about is it should score a lot better. It's really close to Walmart in Kansas. It's, it's really all about location points, really, along with some of these waivers that we're requesting. Early, our past developments that got funded in Topeka and Colby, they're, you know, by a Walmart too. So it's, it's really about being close to shopping, grocery, and then pharmacy. I mean, if you're right next to Walmart, you get all three right there. So I think, yeah, this development being the, what's the new location, it should score a lot better, it should get funded. Which is why we're trying again to, to provide some housing in Leavenworth. I was able to thank you for providing this. So this is be a two-phase project as of now. So the first phase would be 30 units or 15 duplexes for seniors, 55 and older. You know, many veterans will be in here. We just did a project, we're doing a project in Bellevue. It's very similar, just outside of Omaha with off-air force base. So there will be plenty of veterans there as well. And then one thing I would point out too is with a lot of our senior developments, you'll have anywhere from like 20 to 50% of the seniors coming from single-family homes that want to go to a place that's maintenance-free because maintenance is included. So we, we do all the shoveling with the snow, all the lawn care and everything. It's all on one level. So it also opens up some single-family homes that are more perfect for your starter homes for your families as well. There's a lot of that too. And then another thing is there, you know, there's additional second phase we'll look to do as well. And then there's even additional, there's more land I could point. Our purchase agreement isn't for the land up north, but it sounds like the landowners might be interested in the future potentially for a third or fourth phase as well too. So we're excited about the opportunities of doing more than just one development in the city of Leavenworth. And then I guess one other thing I do want to mention that they are truly affordable. So I mean, they're two-bedroom, one-bath, over 1,300 square feet. See, I can pull it up. And a single-car garage as well. There's also community room. And they rent for $700 to $750 a month. So they truly are affordable. So they truly are an asset to the community. And so that's why our big thing is we want to, you know, just because the rents are crazy, we want to keep, you know, more money into the residents' hands so they can, you know, invest in themselves, their family, their community. And so that's, that's a really big deal, you know, for the residents. And then, let's see here, another thing I want to mention is, again, the main reason we're asking for this is it's, it's so competitive in the, in the state, especially now they have state tax credits in Kansas. So there's even more developers that are interested. And it's really to be even competitive. We do need to have D waivers and the sales tax exemptions, the new thing. With that, I would say, I mean, you know, it should be paid off within like four years. And I think that's very little, you know, timeframe to, as far as getting a return on investment for the community and everything with the increase in, you know, sales tax revenue and the increase in property tax revenue that this will bring also to the community. And then, you know, full transparency, we're just doing also another development in Manhattan, and we're going to be asking the same thing from the city of Manhattan as well. So, and other developers too. So it's not just us that's going to be asking. We might have another developer in Leavenworth asking the same thing too in the future. So, so, yeah, really to be competitive, we do truly need these, these sales taxes and for the D waivers. One thing I will add, Kansas is not as bad as other states as far as asking for more support for this community. So other states, we ask for Tiff, you know, tax of credit finance. They'll be at 40 in Nebraska and help with infrastructure. So if anything, I mean, in Kansas, we don't ask as much for, for city support for these projects. So it was just one extra thing that Kansas added this year. But I'll stop, stop rambling, and I do truly just ask for your support. We're, we're excited to, you know, get this project funded this time around. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are these two-bedroom, did you say two-bedroom?
Yeah, two-bedroom, one-bath.
One-bath. And are they income-qualified? So you have to have a low, a low enough income to be able to?
Yes, so they are. So they're 60% of the AMI or less. Some will be 50% of AMI or less.
Mr. Menard, I know you said you guys are going to go try to do this over at Manhattan next. Have you done this anywhere else in the state of Kansas so far?
Yes, yes, so we've done, we've done a lot in Manhattan. We work with Manhattan Area Housing Partnership there, George and Colby. We work in Topeka with Cornerstone Topeka, Chris Palmer and their group. We've done stuff in other areas like, we do a lot in rural areas too. So we've done in Humboldt, Colby, the Goddard outside of Wichita. I'm sure there's others I missed it, and we, yeah, do it throughout the other states here. Mostly in the Midwest, we just stick to the, to the Midwest here mainly.
Cool. How'd you come to decide on, you know, Leavenworth? Anything specifically?
How'd you come to decide on, you know, Leavenworth, anything specifically, just?
No, Leavenworth, actually, another developer, my, the, had a friend that I think he's actually looking to maybe submit a tax credit property, again, with our old site. So he, a developer that works for us knew somebody that wanted to resubmit a tax credit they couldn't make work here. And so we tried to do it. It didn't work, unfortunately, last year, but I still, you know, I liked the town. I thought it should score well enough if we get a different site. So that's kind of why we, we still wanted to, to work with the city of Leavenworth to get another project going, but we just decided to do a different site. And, yeah, I'm excited that there could be multiple phases as well. Because, because one thing with Kansas is if a project gets funded, the next four years to that zip code, they, it gets docked ten points in the application. So it's hard to get another one funded right away. But if you do it in phases, that ten points goes away. So, you know, we could, you know, potentially do developments a lot faster than, you know, it wouldn't have to wait for four years to be competitive per se.
Who's counting your points?
Yeah, so this is the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation.
Is it like a committee that oversees these applications and?
Yeah, they have people who work for KHRC. Terry Bradshaw is really the, the main person that knows the points there. And then L S Ice is also the White Tech Allocation Director. There are two that kind of heads that. But, yeah, I work closely with them, you know, they trade, does this count for points? You know, houses and do that stuff. So obviously, we have money into the project already. Want to get, you know, our best, best foot forward and make sure this project gets funded.
I definitely think it's great for our community. And you said it's limited to thirty-six-year-olds and older?
Eighty-five and older. At least, at least one person has to be fifty-five or older.
There's a few of us that qualify.
I don't think we qualify for the income. We qualify for the other part, yeah.
And what does AMI stand for?
Oh, the Area Media Income.
Media Income, thank you.
And it's really, um, income, so assets, it's not a huge deal, per se. We've had, so people can sell their own, they can have a lot of assets. But the big thing is if they have to draw, like a mandatory out of their retirement account or account or something like that, that's kind of where it hits people, unfortunately. But it really, yeah, it goes off the income mostly.
That's good. Are these slab homes?
Yeah, so these will be slab-on-grade. Yeah, they're two-bedroom, one-bath, entry-level. So a lot of seniors like them since there's no stairs.
Sure. And is, will there be tornado shelters somewhere built into the middle of it, or?
So it'd be the, the bathroom, really, per se, is where that, or the, the community building.
I was going to ask about the community building.
And do you have a property manager on site, or?
Yeah, for this one, we'll, we'll most likely look to have a property manager on site, especially once we're doing, doing whole school phases. And we have some, we're doing a third phase now in like Fall City, and they have some in Auburn, some Fairberry, so some towns kind of southeast Nebraska, all about Nebraska City. So we have some properties post-bid that we manage. A lot, a lot in Kansas we don't manage, just since we work with local nonprofits. But this one, we, we look to manage.
Awesome.
Cool.
It looks like you have washers and dryers, which is, which is great. That's one thing we have a problem with it. Our Section Eight housing out on, out behind the old plaza, can't think of the name of it now.
Oh, yeah.
Is, is the, there's a, there's a central place where you do wash and dryer, and you got to sign up for it. If you miss it, then you're out, you know. It's nice to have the washer and dryer there in your hookup and everything in your, in your, in your own building, so you can do your own. That's really nice.
Well, no, any, any other questions? I guess maybe timeframe, if this all, you know, goes through and everything, we're kind of?
Yeah, we looked to get funded in, what is it, August? So we'll, we'll submit a pre-application in January. It's a long process.
For sure.
And so we'll, we'll submit a pre-app in January, a full app in May, and then hopefully get funded in August. And then closing process nowadays usually takes, especially if you need to get rezoned and whatnot and replatted, you know, six months or so. So we'd be looking at first quarter 2025.
Okay, okay.
It is, it's a long process, but, you know, it's definitely worth it at the end. And you see people move in and everything, and everybody cutting and all that.
Awesome.
Okay, well, there's no more questions from anyone. We'll go through these resolution items, and I just need a motion for item A.
I'll move approval of the resolution for support for the Excel Development Group for application of low-income housing tax credits from the KHRC, as well as a fee waiver letter and non-binding resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bond.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Pittman.
Aye.
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 Motion passed five zero. Item B, I'm sorry, yeah, item B, Resolution B twenty-three fifty-seven, Non-Binding Industrial Revenue Bond Resolution.
We ended up doing all three on the first.
We did, yeah.
So we're good. Okay, perfect. That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Connor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Menard, appreciate it. Okay, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider City Commercial Insurance Package 2024.
Start with Sarah Boedinger, our city clerk.
Must be hiding our podium. Oh, there it is. Mike Riley up. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, each year, the city, in conjunction with Mike Riley of the Riley Company, reviews the renewal or possible bids for our commercial insurance coverage for the city. This year, our current provider, Travelers, provided a renewal quote for the 2024 coverage. For the premium summary that was provided in your policy report, Travelers quoted a price of five hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars, which is roughly a twenty-five percent increase from our premiums last year. The city typically budgets a five percent increase. The increase in the premiums will be paid from the general fund, sewer fund, refuse fund, Planters Two Fund, and CBB fund reserves. Mr. Riley, I'll have him go into a little more detail about what made the market look like it did for a twenty-five percent increase. In addition to the increased premium, the quote includes the following changes: our increase to our property values, increased wind and hail deductible, and increase to our auto deductibles. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Riley to review the quote with Travelers and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for your time. As Sarah mentioned, we are recommending the renewal with Travelers. Every year at this time, we do send the city's account out to the insurance marketplace, the carriers that, you know, will underwrite the risk. Unfortunately, during this time, the public entity marketplace has significantly dried up to the extent that there are really very few options from a public risk standpoint, from a commercial insurance carrier standpoint, really due to the large property risks that the city has, among a few other things. There are cities, counties, school districts that we work with, and certainly around our area, that are struggling to even find coverage right now, let alone what the premium might be. As a result, we are recommending renewal, although we recognize that it is a painful time. We are in what I would call the perfect storm from a rate standpoint. At the same time, Travelers remains the gold standard from a insurance carrier standpoint. They are pretty much even closed to new business. If you are not a Travelers account as a public entity, they are really not accepting any more new clients due to the amount of risk that they currently have in the area. Again, I mentioned that perfect storm, really from a hard market standpoint, from a rating standpoint, this is kind of the perfect storm. And it really comes down to a variety of issues. From a property standpoint, the combination of catastrophic losses that we all know about that have happened not only in the Midwest, but in Hawaii, in Florida, that certainly impacts not just, you know, the insurance companies, you know, when it impacts them, it impacts all of us. Rising inflation costs due to materials and labor shortage, along with their reinsurance costs. Insurance companies purchase reinsurance after they offer you insurance, that they're, they limit their risk. And their reinsurance costs have gone significantly up. From an auto standpoint, and I mentioned property and auto because that's about sixty-two percent of your overall premium. So it's the bulk of your package. From an auto standpoint, we're seeing escalating medical costs due to claims. We're seeing a lot more claims due to distracted drivers. We're seeing much more attorney involvement. The commercials like Mike's Got This, you see the billboards, that certainly have an impact on our area. And larger jury awards when there are significant claims. We are seeing more and more opportunities for where umbrella policies are being hit today than they ever have been due to large jury awards. So as Sarah mentioned, we are seeing a much more significant increase this year, about twenty-five percent. That is not typical. If you look at the premium summary that Sarah included in your packet, I believe, we are typically averaging somewhere in around that four percent, three percent, six percent range, which is very, you know, typical and, and stable. Even though we're increasing twenty-five percent, I wanted to provide the city with a history of where we've been. So if you look at that premium summary, dating back to the year 2020, we were with a different insurance company at that time by the name of Intact. We actually paid five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the year 2020 to 2021. They then offered a renewal at five hundred and sixty thousand. However, we had an opportunity at that time to change to Travelers. So you see the years are the same there. We moved to Travelers, and instead of paying five sixty-one with Intact, we actually paid four hundred and ten thousand. So we saved really a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from what the renewal was offered that year. Since that time, you can see that Travelers has been fairly steady year over year, with the exception of this year. Going back to 2020 to today, from five hundred and twenty-two thousand to five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, it's about an eight percent increase, eight-point-seven-five percent increase over that four-year period of time, or roughly two percent a year. So while we're seeing a significant increase this year in rate, blended out over those four years, it's really been fairly stable. From a program standpoint, utilization of the program, the following is kind of what we've experienced over the last three years with Travelers. In the auto class, for our auto insurance, we've had a seventy-three percent loss ratio. Not great. In the general liability class code, we've had a ninety-six percent loss ratio. In our professional liability, which deals with a host of different issues, law enforcement liability, public official liability, we have a seventy-nine percent loss ratio. Over the last three years, 2021, 2022, and 2023, Travelers has paid fifty-six claims for a total of six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in losses, average of about two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year, okay? As Sarah mentioned, we are experiencing some, some fairly significant changes. Under the property, we are increasing values. As I mentioned before, from a property standpoint, we're seeing huge inflationary costs when it comes to materials and labor. So we're taking our overall property limits from seventy-four million dollars up to eighty-six million dollars and some change. We have a whole statement of values where we break down every property and show, you know, and we can show you those differences. But in total, that's the difference. They are also increasing the wind hail deductible from one percent to three percent. Our area, in fact, the entire Midwest and most parts of the country are really seeing this wind and hail deductible start to creep up. It was just this past April when I was sitting at home one night, and I hear the pinging at a storm, right, on my roof. And I looked out my, you know, window, and it was small, you know, a little pea-sized hail. Our agency alone re-roofed three hundred and fifty roofs in Leavenworth and Lansing after that small hailstorm this year.
Wow.
Those are the kind of events that you don't even think about that impact not just homeowners' insurance policies, but it impacts the insurance industry as a whole. So wind and hail being obviously one of the major potential losses in our area, the insurance companies are looking to all of us, whether it's your homeowner's policy, your auto policy, or commercial insurance, to have more skin in the game. So with that, they are looking to increase that deductible to three percent of the property value itself with a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars. We are getting to the point, and Sarah and I talked about this out in the hall before the meeting, we are getting close to the point where we are almost, not quite, almost self-insuring our roofs for wind and hail. Not quite, but almost. You can estimate with about a five hundred thousand dollar roof, you will, under this particular deductible, get somewhere in the neighborhood of about two hundred thousand dollars of insurance where you would pay a three hundred thousand dollar deductible. So we're not quite there, but we're getting close. I see this worm turning at some point in time. As I mentioned, this is truly the perfect storm where it seems like everything is colliding at one time. Massive catastrophic losses, increased cost of construction labor, shortages, inflationary issues, and it's just all hitting at once. From an auto standpoint, as Sarah mentioned, we're seeing some deductibles move up slightly for garbage trucks, the larger vehicles, but not substantial, going from a thousand to three thousand. From an overall program perspective, I would tell you the program is extremely sound. It's well-rounded. We provide great coverage across the board. We work with Sarah and her staff and her team, keeping it up to date. We would make one recommendation, and, and we're working with Sarah to, to work on getting a quote for this. You all have probably read a lot about cyber liability. It has kind of become a new hot topic in the past three to five years, not just with public entity, but with any commercial insurance. We do have some coverage under the Travelers form. It's a hundred thousand dollars of coverage today. That is very, very minimal. So we are asking Travelers to increase that and to give us quotes for a half a million dollars and for one million dollars of coverage. You've probably read a lot about different entities that have been attacked. Their computer systems have been attacked by cyber risk. Right now, the Kansas Judicial Branch announced that they were attacked about a month or two months ago. And they have effectively shut down the courts in Kansas for roughly about a month. And, and I think a hundred and four Kansas counties have been impacted by that. And that was a cyber attack that caused that to happen. Platte County School District, over a hundred and fifty thousand in ransom paid. Spring Hill, the city, over four hundred thousand dollars in ransom paid to get their computers released for, from the ransom. The list is lengthy for public entities, as long with private entities, even in our community, that have had these type of claims. So we're concerned, a hundred thousand dollars, even though it sounds like a lot, is a drop in the bucket during one of these claims. So we're, we're trying to get that half million to million-dollar quote. And we'll review that with Sarah and Paul when we get those quotes accomplished. But short of that, I'm happy to answer any questions and go from there.
To me, it seems like they're, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Showing any respect here.
No, 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 you're fine. No, please, please.
It seems to me like paying ransoms are encouraging them to do that again. Is anybody not paying ransoms?
I, yes. The answer to your question is, is yes. There are, I think it's circumstance, you know, each circumstance is, is certainly different. I think the insurance carriers know the risk, right? And they know what it would take, and it's no different than any claim. They have certainly a lot of data in place. So if they know if they can pay the ransom and get the computers released for half of what it might cost for them to rebuild that infrastructure and the time and effort that it would take.
But in the long run?
I know.
In the long run, they'd do it again. And so you, in the long run, it could, it'll cost everybody more if they keep paying ransoms. I don't, I don't understand that.
Well, actually.
Just because we have insurance doesn't mean we have to pay it, you know?
The algorithm would be, they only want to settle if they think it's cheaper for them to settle than to rebuild. Now, what you're saying, it doesn't provide any disincentive
Right, in the long run.
For the cyber thieves.
So they could keep coming and coming and coming.
Unfortunately, that's a, that's a world probably much bigger than our room than we can deal with. You know, the cyber thieves of the world, you know, that money bounces a thousand times in seconds to try to track those people down. So I can just share with you stories and anecdotes about what's happening in the world and in the insurance world today, and we try to make recommendations based off of that.
That's good, thank you. Thank you for that information. It's really helpful.
And Mr. Riley, when, please don't misunderstand, you are our broker. And I, when I ask questions, it's not at you, it's, you know, from a commentary standpoint. So obviously, there's a lot of things going on right now with costs going up everywhere. And it's, it's so easy, we're getting accustomed to, oh, you know, inflation. I mean, there's just so many things going on, and you can almost bullet point, you know, what's going on. But at what point, I don't know what your relationship is like with Travelers, at what point can we ask for more of a breakdown? Actually get some numbers and say, okay, well, you say this, we all have hail, right? And we've had roof damages, we've had acts of, you know, God. But just, just to, you know, nothing against Travelers, but just to keep everybody on point, to be able to have the conversation as we get into, you know, Q1, Q2 of 2024, to have the discussions and, and for next year at this time. Because, I mean, I definitely don't want to be where we're at, you know, at this rate, we're going to be self-insuring Lansing also at this point. But just to get a little bit more data behind that and justification. I mean, it's, those are all great reasons that you laid out. I mean, and I, I don't doubt that. I mean, and I don't doubt that, but I would like to, at some point, because I want us to continue to push back a little bit more. And it's so easy, because the highly inflationary environment we're in right now, it's, you know, you go to McDonald's, you want to pay more, I mean, yeah. Cost of everything is going up. But I would like to push back where we can and just ask for a little bit more cost justification. Most folks are not going to ask for that. And I would just, you know, just maybe get your thoughts on that. Is that something, you have the relationship. I don't know what that's like, but...
Yes.
I'll shut up so you can.
100%. And I will tell you, one of the benefits of working, I think, not just with our firm, but with companies like Intact and Travelers, they do value the long-term relationship. So when I go, when I look back at our history with the city of Leavenworth account, it includes about a seven-year, eight-year history with Travelers way back in the day.
Sure.
We then shifted to Intact, and now we're back to Travelers. So one of the benefits is when we see an opportunity in the marketplace, we can go to different carriers to make that impact. At the same time, over the course of years, we have no problem pushing back on Travelers to say, hey, we need some relief here. And where it's justified, right?
Sure.
What I'm, what we're faced with this year is basically a take it or leave it scenario.
Sure.
And I'll be honest with you. Travelers, along with many insurance companies, are at a point, and I sent along some reading material, I'm not sure it got passed along, but I'm sure Sarah could get that, several articles, you know, $23.3 billion. The insurance industry had the worst year in history in 2023. State Farm got out of the city of, or the state of California, writing no more homeowners in the state of California. They vacated Minnesota and Wisconsin due to wind and hail. So when those kind of things are impacting other states, it certainly makes a company like Travelers look at what they're doing. They have fewer competitors, they're losing money, and the risk is substantial. When you look at $86 million of property insured in this particular area, there is a chance that the F4 comes through and hits a significant portion of that. And while $568,000 is a lot of money, it doesn't come anywhere close to paying a 20, or 30, or 40 million dollar bill. So there are certainly opportunities, Mr. Mayor, for us to push back, and I think we have over the course of the years, which is why you've gone from 522,000 to 410 back in 2020 and 2021. Those were opportunities that we saw in the marketplace, an opportunity to do that, not just with your account, but possibly, you know, the marketplace in general. Right now, unfortunately, we don't have that luxury. There are very few, if any, options for us to go to for the municipality program today. But going forward, I'm happy to share the details behind the claims. I think hopefully breaking out what has been paid, right? So we're not just writing a check for 500 or $568,000. I mean, over the course of the last three years, we've paid in roughly 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. They've paid out $696,000 in claims. So it's not just a check going out. There are claims. There are things that do happen
Sure.
throughout the course of business on a yearly basis that probably doesn't get brought to your level of attention. Some might, but that add up. And so it's not just a check that the city's writing. There is some money coming back in the form of claims.
Sure. And I appreciate it, and I do appreciate you, you know, leaning forward and especially over the past few years, you know, everything you've done to kind of mitigate that. It's got to be a balance in the act that gets old after a while, I'm sure. But definitely, no, I've seen those markets where, you know, it's a one voice that finally starts turning the tide because it's like, oh, hold on a second. That's not what this material is doing, or that, or that, you know. So, no, I appreciate the, more the explanation and, you know, insight into that. So thank you for that. I don't have any other questions at this point.
Thank you, Mike, for doing this for us and keeping on top of all this, too. That was quite a big drop in 2021, so we're very happy about that.
Okay, with that, just need a motion.
I move to approve the 2024 commercial insurance package with Travelers in the amount of not to exceed $568,629.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Item 16, consider approval to purchase 2024 refuse truck and compaction body.
This will be Brian Faust, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The issue before you this evening is to authorize the Solid Waste Division to purchase a new refuse truck in the amount of $229,000. This equipment is on our replacement schedule after 2024. Steve King is our Solid Waste Foreman. He prepared bid specifications and researched options for purchasing a new refuse truck. After reviewing the available purchase options, staff felt advantageous to utilize Sourcewell's national pricing for the cooperative purchase. This program allows the city to purchase equipment that meets our needs while guaranteeing that standard governmental purchasing practices are followed. The city is trading in a 2006, that'd be roughly the 18-year-old freightliner refuse truck. Ordering the vehicle now will help ensure that it is deliverable and usable in 2024. The 2024 Solid Waste Division budget does include the amount of $201,500 for replacement of the unit. The cost for the new equipment is $229,000 with a trade-in value of $27,500. So the actual cost of the trade-in, after the trade-in, is $201,500. To comply with the Kansas cash basis law, there is cash available in 2023 for this purchase, even though delivery will not occur until 2024. Staff does recommend the city commission approve the purchase of a 2024 new cab and chassis with refuse compaction body for $229,000. The purchase will be from Elliott Equipment Company in Grandview, Missouri. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, anyone?
Sounds good. I, are they behind on getting these? So how long would it take to get one after you order it?
We will get this early in 2024.
Oh, so it'd be, they're not having to do it.
A couple slotted in there, and so we asked them if they could maybe try to hold a portion.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
It's a cool contract, too. Okay, no other questions? Just need a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a 2024 new unused truck cab and its chassis with refuse compaction body of $229,000. Purchase will be from Elliott Equipment Company, 14219 Norby Road, Grandview, Missouri.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Pittman.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 5-0. Item 17, consider award of bid for Planters II Chiller System Replacement Project. Once again, Julie Hurley on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, permission. She said this is considered the bid for the replacement of the chiller system at Planters II. The chiller system is in need of replacement. This is being paid for out of the capital fund that is available in our budget over there at Planters II. Just as you'll recall, in past years, recently, we've replaced all the pipes throughout Planters II with the same capital fund. We've replaced all of the flooring, repainted all of the hallways and common areas. So this is kind of in line with that. So we did work with Alan Langford at Langford Fund Learn Associates for Engineering Services to develop the specifications for this project. We put this out for bid and received two proposals. The low proposal was from Di Agostino in the amount of $708,325,000. So staff would recommend awarding the bid for the chiller system replacement at Planters II in that amount of $708,325,000 to Di Agostino Mechanical Contractors. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments?
Do you know how much is in the fund for that?
I don't know off the top of my head how much is available, but there is sufficient funds for this to cover all of this expense.
Did you say something, Commissioner Pittman?
Okay, any other questions from anybody? All right, none? I just entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposal of $708,325,000 be awarded to Di Agostino Mechanical Contracts Incorporated.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Motion passed 5-0. Thank you. Item 18, first consideration ordinance amend, Chapter 10, Article 10, property maintenance of the Code of Ordinances.
City Attorney will handle items 18 and 19 tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. These next two items go along with, I believe what we did at the last meeting, we're trying to do step-by-step some updates on certain provisions of our code related to nuisance abatement and enforcement. This particular ordinance addresses the International Property Maintenance Code, which is a very thick code book that the city maintains. But Article 10 of Chapter 10 incorporates that by reference and then makes some changes specific to certain city matters. As part of our review of that, of the city's nuisance abatement procedures, we determined that the city code had some duplicative, but also certain inconsistent terms spread across the chapter on unsafe and dangerous structures, across the International Property Maintenance Code, and the General Nuisances Ordinance. So tonight, we are adopting the International Property Maintenance Code again, and we are making the following changes to it that are different than what have been before. We've added some cross-references to other portions of the city code dealing with unsafe or dangerous structures and general nuisances to provide consistency. What I mean by that is your city code, and we'll have some other changes coming. There's certain statutes, as we've talked about, about how unsafe or dangerous structures are handled. The International Property Code has some slight differences in there, and so we're trying to blend those two together to make them consistent. We've expanded some provisions of the International Property Maintenance Code on weeds and thickets, which incorporate some provisions of Kansas statute. And we've also added some expanded provisions on junk motor vehicles, which also matches Kansas statutes on the matter. So those are the substantive changes for you tonight. There's some other stuff, maybe some light cleanup, numbering, and I think we made some changes to references to different types of code officials to be consistent with the city's terminology.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Waters. Any other questions, comments, feedback from anybody?
This is strictly on property maintenance, right?
This is part of the property maintenance code, yes. Not, there's, you have adopted, what, the electrical code, the fire code?
Yeah, not the building code.
Not the building code. This is property maintenance.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, we do just need a consensus for both items.
I'm good.
Yes.
Do we have that? Yeah? Okay.
All right. And our next item is the consideration of ordinance amended Chapter 10 of Article 11, unsafe or dangerous structure. So in the same line, Article 11 of Chapter 10 contains the city's ordinances regarding the abatement of unsafe or dangerous structures. These are the code provisions and the statutes that you all have come to know as the demo list procedures. In many ways, the provisions of your city code are intended to mirror the statutory provisions of Kansas statute. We talked about this a little bit the last time, how sometimes we want to have all those things, even if they're in the statute book, have them consistent with the code book so that somebody isn't having to go to two different sets of documents to determine what the procedures are. So some of the work that we've done has been incorporating some of the Kansas statutes into the code itself. Some of the cleanup items and the work that we've done on this include the following. The Kansas Statutory Act uses the term unsafe or dangerous structure. However, that is not a term that is actually defined in statute. And so a new definition of that term has been added to city code. And what we did was we used factors that are set forth in the International Property Maintenance Code. And there's also a section of the Kansas Urban Renewal Law, which doesn't apply to you directly, but has some good language in there. So we thought it'd be good to have a definition of what constitutes an unsafe or dangerous structure so that code enforcement officials have an idea of what are the types of things that can bring to the demo list, what are types of things that mean if it no longer meets these factors, we're no longer on the demo list at all, and it shouldn't be on there, and those types of, but we never really had a very good definition of that in the code. City code had also used the term unfit for human habitation or unfit for human occupancy instead of unsafe or dangerous. Again, we want to be consistent with the statute, unsafe or dangerous structure, but we've used those unfit for human occupancy or unfit for human habitation as standards that go into declaring whether something is an unsafe or a dangerous structure. So we've kept some of those same principles, but just again, trying to be consistent in our terminology. As I mentioned, the term environmental officer that's in the current code has been replaced with reference to the code official under the International Property Maintenance Code. Also include the Director of Planning and Community Development, the Building Official, Building Inspector, and such other officials as may be designated. We've added some provisions requiring excavation fill as an aspect of any tear-down abatement. Another topic that came tonight, we clarified some of the language regarding casualty insurance proceeds to match the Kansas statute as well. And we also added updated provisions for enforcement as well in municipal court, which has always kind of been an option, but we wanted to make it clear that that was another path available for these types of violations. With that, proposal ordinance is in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good.
Any other comments from anybody?
No other questions.
Okay. All right, just need a consensus on this item as well?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Waters. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Hengel, what, oh, stay on the job, you ready?
Oh, I was prepared to do this.
Yeah, it's Commissioner Bowder tonight. That only found out tonight.
Throw him under the bus there. Okay. I move approval of claims. After review of the claims for this, these last, November 18 and December, through December 8, 2023, I move to approve those claims in the amount of $2,635,438.89. Net amount for longevity pay effective November 24, 2023 in the amount of $44,808.63. Payroll number 24 effective December 1, 2023 in the amount of $395,652.90. No police or fire pension.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Pittman.
Aye.
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 All right, that concludes, passed 5-0, concludes regular meeting tonight. Mr. Kramer, you got any comments?
Quick clarification for Commissioner Bowder. We currently have $517,175 in the Planters II capital budget, but we expect to receive $200,000 in 2024, which will take us to $717,000, which is just barely above the chiller replacement.
Okay, thank you.
So we will have sufficient funds. And HUD does want you to spend those.
Oh, got it.
They only let you bank them so much, and then they want you to, so we're good on that one. And then the only other note, meeting with Parks Director this morning, we had a new record for our youth basketball program. We have 198 Leavenworth youth. It's a combination of word of mouth, really good coaches that have done this. Yard signs, we've been using those real estate yard signs at the school, so, you know, and out in the community. So it's been a good group. We're picking up some from Fort Leavenworth, from Mountain Lake County. We even get a couple in here from Lansing.
Yay.
That's cool.
So, right at about 200, so I just wanted to share that.
Can't say enough about good coaches, you know?
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you for that. We'll go around the horn here. Commissioner Pittman, any comments?
Yeah, sure. I just want to give a congratulations to the Christmas market this weekend. They had a huge turnout. They estimated about 3,200 people, and they did this smart kind of contest where, when they came in, they got a chip. And if you were, depending where you're from, what color chip you got. And so as they voted for the best decorated tent, they kind of put the chip in. Well, what that chip was basically showed that 60% of the people that came, or at least voted, were locals. 19% were from Fort Leavenworth, and 21% were from out of town. So it definitely brought in people to our community. There was a couple vendors that sold out. And almost every single local business I talked to today or yesterday said that their sales were increased. They had record sales for the day.
Oh, that's awesome.
So congratulations to Carrie and her crew down there. They did a great job. And it was, it was fun. It was a good time if you went. I think I saw almost everybody down there, so, so, so good job.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Hengel.
I'll echo your comments. I went towards the end of the whole thing. Some of the vendors had sold out, had no reason to stay there, so they left, which, you know, just makes sense. But those vendors that were there, I asked them a couple of questions. One in particular, I asked them, so I asked, how was it? Mostly, you know, all I got were positive comments. Then I'd ask them, will you come back next year? Oh, definitely. Oh, yeah. Oh, this was good. We'll be back. So, you know, she did a great job pulling that whole thing together. And next year, I hope to get down there earlier. I know she's got some big plans for next year.
I know she's got some big plans for next year. So congratulations, Carrie. Did a great job.
Cool deal. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, the Christmas market was definitely a huge success. Congratulations, Carrie, and all the downtown business owners that participated in it. And then also, I just want to give a special shout out to Ms. Edna Wagner for her successful Christmas event that she put together. And it was her last one before she leaves Leavenworth. Ms. Wagner, you are loved. You will be missed. No one can fill your shoes. We hoping that we can find somebody at least qualified enough to put your socks on. And so, but yeah, she's just been amazing. And once again, it's just been an honor and a privilege to serve with this commission, you know, in 2023 and then moving forward in 2024. Like I share with you, Mayor Martin, may be you. It's much more than a figurehead position. You know, God has a calling on your life. You're in that position. Serve the people, meet the needs. It's the person that makes a position, and you have my support. And God bless you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Appreciate the time.
I also was downtown for the event, and on such short notice, she did a great job. I saw people not only there, but also walking all over downtown. So that's a good thing. It did bring in the other businesses. So, I mean, if she, she worked hard doing it, if she wants to do it, I strongly support it. Absolutely. After looking, we received this week the goals and the update on the goals. And we appreciate seeing that at the end of the year. Several of our goals we had last year were accomplished. Something that I would like to see as a long-term goal is, I mean, you know, our insurance here, we're talking about disasters and that sort of thing, and how we handle disasters. I would, we do have a disaster team in the county, and I know that. But we do, what I would like to see is a long-term study and implementation of self-sustainability here. And I'm talking about things that would actually help lower costs for everybody, such as solar energy and wind energy, and some sort of plan for our future to bring down the cost and be able to provide, if we had a disaster, still be able to provide our electricity and our, you know, our power here so that we can continue to run with our environment. You know, we don't know what's going to happen here. I mean, if we had the rains like they've had on the East Coast, we would be flooded just like everybody else. And so, you know, all of these things, people being without power for months at a time, not everybody can afford to have a generator or something, you know. So as a long-term goal, I really would like to see us focus on our environment. I don't expect that we can make a huge impact on the environment of the country, you know, or of the world. But I would like to see us look at that for our own, have our city be an example and set that for our own. Things like we've got a, we can't put solar panels on the community center because of the, because of the...
Historic.
Historic part, but we could on the municipal service center, put some, I mean, panels around there or on the building. And there are probably others that we could do things to. So I would really like to see, like to see some sort of plan in the future and have that at least added to. It is in, as Mr. Kramer reminded me, it is in our comprehensive plan. And so I would like to see have that added to our goals in the coming year. Well, when do we meet, about March or April to do that?
Yeah, well, usually is sort of the kickoff to the budget season. We'll get that budget calendar finalized here before the end of the year.
Okay, so anyway, just some thoughts. I don't know what you all think, but if you're with me on that, I would appreciate the support on that.
I got you, man.
Yeah, a lot of tight situations with market conditions create a lot of new emerging markets, you know. So I think opportunity is going to be out there for sure. Thank you. So with that, just to kind of close out tonight, again, I know everybody's talking about Carrie. I think that was great for the short window to turn around, getting 3,200 people like that. That's really good. So it'll be cool to see what 2025, 2024 brings in that regard. I do want to just say again to my team here, you know, definitely thank you for the nomination tonight, Commissioner Wilson specifically, you know, just appreciate your support. And it is a pleasure to serve with you. And, you know, I definitely love that we all have different ideas and opinions and stuff like that. And I think that's good. I think it's great. It's very healthy. And, you know, one thing I've learned, it's definitely, we're all cool with different, you know, opinions and everything like that. So I definitely want to also thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for the opportunity to serve Leavenworth and to do it alongside my team up here. And I'm definitely looking forward to 2024. Got a lot on our plate to knock out for sure, but it is a pleasure. And I do love serving with you all, and I'm looking forward to serving this year with you as well, Holly. So with that, I guess we're, we'll be back here next...
Yes, study session next week.
Okay, all right, cool deal. With that, I just need a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion later.